Good evening. I'm going to call the order of the special meeting of the Dudley-Churton Regional School Committee. It is Wednesday, May 3rd, and it's 6:45 PM. We're at the Shepherd Hill Regional High School. Why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to have a brief moment of silence, but before we have that moment of silence, I just want to recognize one of our former teachers, Carol Candy. She's a foreign language teacher at Shepherd Hill, passed away this week, and we just want to just say have a moment of silence in her honor. Thank you. Okay, great. Moving on, we have communications. Does any of our members have communications this week?
I would just like to let everybody know that there are four team spots open for the John Pear Golf Tournament on May 20th, if anybody is interested in playing. It's a fun tournament to be part of that's being held at Heritage Country Club.
Anybody else? I'd just like to put in a reminder about the art show on Friday, and it's 5 to 7. Am I right? At Shepherd Hill? Okay. It's a great event, so make sure you go. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have anyone who wishes to have public comment? Sure, come on up. Oh, you can sit, you can sit either side, doesn't matter. Probably right there.
This is set up for you. You have to come up to the table and sit at the chair, sorry.
Yeah, alright, I'll explain it a little better. No, that's okay. You just have to...
Say it for somebody.
That's okay, you just have to state your name. State your name, what town you're from, and you have about three minutes.
Okay. Dear school committee members, my name is Beth Perdus, and I am here as a resident of Charlton. I'm also here as a community member, an educator, and as president of the Charlton Middle School Music Parents Association, and most importantly, a mother. My daughter has given me permission to share some personal information with you. My daughter is in eighth grade and will be a freshman next year at Shepherd Hill. My daughter, like many other children, suffers from anxiety and depression. She's been in therapy since she was eight years old. COVID pushed her over the edge. Last year and this year have been a roller coaster of emotions. We have gotten her help in all shapes and forms, but I will tell you what helped her the most: show choir and field hockey. She has been a member of CMS Mirage for two years. The support and sense of community and accomplishment she gets from show choir is unlike any we can give her outside of school. She is happy when she's with show choir. She's proud to be with her teammates and represent Charlton Middle School. In all her depressive episodes, she has still only missed one show choir rehearsal in two years. That's one out of 60. Last year, she decided to join the club field hockey team at CMS and loved it. When the opportunity came for her to play for Shepherd Hill this year, she jumped at it. Being an eighth grader, she didn't get much game time, but she understood. She was just happy to be part of the team and represent the Rams like her aunt and her uncle did. If this district has to cut the arts and sports, as well as many essential positions, it will affect our students' mental health. We are in a mental health crisis. This decision is of the utmost importance. We will be failing our children and our mental health resources will be pushed past their limits. The arts and sports are not just places to put your kids after school. They are a place of belonging, a place of self-discovery, and a place of pride. Last week, I had a group of middle schoolers ask me, as the president of the Music Parents Association, if they could do a GoFundMe for their show choir. It is sad that they have to ask this, but they are desperately searching for a solution, and these are fifth through eighth graders. Can we please find another way to make things work? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment?
Are you going to go over the handout and let us speak or ask questions?
You know, I'll put public comment, I'll add some more time for public comment at the end. Sure. Thank you for that suggestion.
Now, if someone raises their hand and wants to ask a question, what's going to happen? Are we going to recognize them or wait until the end? I know a few people probably want to ask questions once we're, you know, in the discussion.
I think if they have a particular question on a discussion, they can ask, but if it's not related to the discussion, I would ask to wait till public comment, if that helps, because this is more, you know, we have to keep the committee business. That's okay. Okay, so we'll open to new business. We're doing the discussion and recommendations of the town of Dudley to include fiscal year 2024 operational override and the Shepherd Hill Regional High School feasibility study assessment.
Madam Chair, thank you. Just for a point of clarity, Mr. David Reisenthal is not with us this evening, but there is a memo that we will go over after this presentation. That is the information that he provided, Mr. Matthew.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. So, we are presenting this evening. I want to be, I want to add some clarity. At our last meeting last week, we targeted next Wednesday as the date to present you the $2 million in reductions and how that will impact our district in greater detail. That is not this presentation this evening. This presentation this evening is what is next for us as Dudley-Churton Regional School District, given the information we have at this current time, and some other information for, add some clarity. So, to start, we are going to cover what we covered last week during the school committee meeting, presentation. We talked about the three budgets. Mr. Matthew, did you want to talk about this? You want me to just kind of review it?
If you want to just review it.
Okay. So, when we talked about the initial budget, this was with the governor's budget. These were the numbers that we provided to you based off of the governor, Governor Healy's budget to us as a district. Level service budget was an increase of $3.6 million for us. We've shared this on numerous occasions from February 1st all the way through as to what represents the $3.6 million, given what the governor gave us for numbers at the end of January. I think it was January 25th, somewhere in there, and what the assessments would look like for the towns of Charlton and town of Dudley to have a level service budget for FY '24.
If I may, just as a reminder, this was the oddball year with the governor's budget, and it actually wasn't released right until the end of February, I think it was.
Now, could you just clarify a level service budget for the audience and for us again?
A level service is maintaining the experiences that our students are having now with some slight adjustments from year to year.
And it's slight adjustments?
For Dudley-Churton, it's reductions usually from year to year. So, even including some of those reductions, the fixed cost increases were astronomical compared to previous years. So, to maintain a level service budget for the services and the experiences for our students, we needed to increase our budget by $3.6 million. But the two terms that you hear often are level service and level funded. A level funded budget is why we would need to put forth a reduction of $2 million. Okay? So, from there, we looked at version one last, at the last meeting. This, sorry, this particular, this is with House numbers. The House came out with their numbers and their budget numbers to share with us, so it helped us bring down the assessments for the two communities. So, the assessment changed from our perspective significantly for both communities based off of the House numbers. Now, you have the governor's numbers, then you have the House numbers, and we're awaiting the Senate numbers, which should be coming out. I think they said May 10th was a House Ways, Senate Ways and Means. It's not the Senate budget, but it gives us at least a preliminary idea of what that will look like. So, with the additional House Ways and Means revenues, we were able to lower the assessment, but a level funded budget still is an increase of $3.6 million. It didn't lower our need to fund our budget increase by 3.6. It only lowered what the assessment would be for our two communities, which is a positive direction. So, with that said, we provided you a version two. Now, keep in mind, school committee voted on a version one at our last meeting. We provided you a version two. This is a level funded budget, not a level service budget, a level funded, meaning we take the same funding that we had this past year and apply it to fiscal year '24. So, it's taken fiscal year '23 numbers and applying it to fiscal year '24. So, the assessments on a level funded budget for the town of Charlton would be reduced by over $1 million to $746,000. And the town of Dudley would be a negative $34,000 because they used Opera money last year to support our fiscal budget. So, the assessments of Dudley in a level funded budget would be negative $34,000. Therefore, requiring the district, a level funded budget would provide us a $1.6 million increase. So, the difference between the 1.6 and the 3.6, which means we're required to reduce our budget by $1.76,785. That's the detail we will provide next week, is how do we reduce our budget by $2 million? So, that's just a review of last week's meeting and what we shared last week. Not knowing we were having this meeting today, obviously. So, the reason for this meeting is because we're continuing to work with the town of Dudley on, you know, where we're at and what it looks like, and we have tried to simplify the request based off of the failed override vote, ballot vote of February, April 25th. So, we're ultra-focused on just fiscal year '24. What do we need now to have a level service budget moving forward? And again, we're basing this off of House One numbers, not the governor's numbers and not the Senate numbers, because we don't know the Senate numbers, and the governor's numbers would change this value upwards. So, we're taking the conservative route. We're taking the most favorable for the two communities and for the community of Dudley to present a request. So, if you saw, you heard me say a negative 34, so that has to be built back into this. So, for a level service budget, the assessment to the town of Dudley would be $994,284 for fiscal year '24 to present a level service budget. Just as a review, without the FY '24, without a FY '24 Dudley operational override, remember, we're two towns, one school district. One town can't say, "We're going to pay you more." It's a balance. It's a failed override automatically lowers Charlton's assessment as well. Even if Charlton wants to try to provide us more money, they can't. It's just the way the assessments work and the funding for the Dudley-Churton Regional School District. So, level funding reduces Charlton's assessment, as I shared with you, around a million, a little over a million dollars. A DCRSD level funded budget requires 1.9, or if people are comfortable, I'm okay with rounding it up to a $2 million reduction for our district. So, the question for tonight, May 3rd, Wednesday, May 3rd, is we clearly know that the town of Dudley voters provided us direction moving forward. The messages we heard through our forums and obviously as a result of the vote is that we need to separate our capital. We need to look at that some other way. That's some type of an exclusion or some nature, but that's not us. That's the town of Dudley that needs to do that, but we can provide direction and support for that. And also, the message was to remove any future DCRSD funding through a town of Dudley stabilization account. So, that was part of the initial ballot, and that's, I think clearly that needs to be looked at as a removal or a non-starter, is, it would be the terminology that I would use. So, also, we believe that school committee should address the most pressing needs for FY '24 so that we don't decimate our district with a $2 million reduction. I think that that's the goal as well for us as a community, which you did vote for a version one budget, to have a level service budget. So, you're already addressing that, but I think there's a little bit more work to do, and that's why we're meeting tonight, to try to provide some direction to the town of Dudley. And then, we need to continue to work with the town of Dudley to develop a plan for funding the Shepherd Hill Regional High School feasibility study. Again, the school committee has voted for it. The assessment could come forward, but it's not something that we just want to provide to the town of Dudley without working with them as a partner and a collaborator in the process. Okay? So, I know this continues to be questions around the Shepherd Hill Regional High School feasibility study. This has been a long endeavor. This isn't something that just popped up on the radar this particular year. There has been a lot of work by this committee, by administration, prior administration, by a formed school, Shepherd Hill School Building Committee that has representations for both communities as non-school personnel, as well as school personnel. The School Building Committee voted, and you as a committee voted, for a $1 million feasibility study for Shepherd Hill Regional High School. So, the Charlton assessment, which we've already received support for, is $537,000. They've already indicated to us that they will support it. They will figure out a way and they will pay for it. The Dudley assessment is $463,000, but we cannot check it off as we have support for that at this time. So, we continue to work with the town of Dudley. Because of the timeline, everything was due to MSBA. They are, and I'll talk about that in a minute. I've had to write, I have to write a letter for, requesting an extension for 30 days. So, now we have until June 29th to continue to stay in the grant program with the school building authority. Keep in mind, the feasibility study in itself has a reimbursement rate to it. That is anywhere, it's a guess because they haven't said it yet, because they're looking, they have timelines and they have expectations on us as a district and a community to say, "Yes, we're, these things are, these ducks are in a row, then they will get back to us," because it's their grant program, it's not ours. But my strongest belief going through this with MSBA in the past and looking at, you know, how they form this number, the reimbursement rate should be between 50 and 59% for the feasibility study, for the entire cost of the feasibility study. So, that means the 500, there would be 50 to 59%. It's one percentage for the $1 million. So, let's say it's 50%. That's 50% of 537 would be returned to the town of Charlton through credits on our assessment to the town of Charlton. If it's 50%, it would be 50% of $463,000 would be returned to the town of Dudley through credited, as credited on our assessments, which we have done over the past, through our assessments with the towns. I keep doing that. To talk more about the feasibility study, keep in mind, this is a Massachusetts School Building Authority program. This is not a Department of Elementary and Secondary education program. This is not a local program. This is a state Massachusetts school building. It's run by the state treasurer of our state. This is a grant program, meaning throughout the program, no matter where it goes, there's a 50 to 59% reimbursement rate, somewhere in that neighborhood. This is the first invitation. You have to be invited to be in the grant program. This is the first invitation in 14 years, meaning there have been 14 years worth of applications to be in this. And it's not just, it's not just writing your school name down and saying, "We'd like to be invited." We're talking about an extensive process, which this stuff is on our website. You can look under Mass School Building Authority or anything there, and it's all there on our website. But this is, there have been 14 efforts to try to be invited into this grant program with Mass School Building Authority, and we have been invited in for the first time. And we have been crossing the Ts and dotting the Is and providing all of the information that Mass School Building Authority requires, which is very extensive. It's literally a part-time job for somebody. And as you know, we don't have part-time people, so we're doing it. It's a very strict process and a timeline for us to remain in the grant program. It's not something that you can say, "We don't want it. Can we wait another year?" When you're invited, you're invited in. They have modules that you have to go through, and you have to cross the T and dot the Is to get to the next module. So, in my conversation with them this week, to clarify the 30-day extension because of the, we have not identified with the town of Dudley on how to pay for this yet. They, I asked, I said, "I'm asked a thousand times, and I'll be asked a thousand more. What happens if we don't fund it?" MSBA is a very forgiving organization, but the bottom line is, over time, they will bump us out of their program and go to somebody else who will support it. Does that mean we can stay in it for months to come? No. Will they give us another shot somewhere? Yes. But they get to a point where they, they have budgeted us in their budget. They need to move, if we're not able to succeed in this in a couple of months, they're going to move us out and have that money reallocated for someone else. Because the cost of doing school building work increases from year to year, no matter what. So, they've budgeted based off of our timeline, their module, their timeline, on where we would get and where we would be to see if they could help fund 50 to 59% of a project for us here at Shepherd Hill. There may be another district that has at 70% that they put off, and now they have an extra 20, 25% based off of the failed opportunity for Shepherd Hill, and they can add that percentage into that project and pull that project in. Or quite the opposite, they may have wealthier communities that only have 25% reimbursement, and they may be able to do two programs now because Shepherd Hill wasn't, is kicked out of the program. So, it's not something that you can sit on and wait. As I already indicated, I have to apply for a 30-day extension, which I was, again, through my conversation this week, we will receive. But it's, that's, that's it, a 30-day extension. Okay? So, what is the feasibility study? I know I've asked this question. I know we've presented it several times at year meeting. I know we've presented it at the School Building Committee meeting. It's very expensive at a million dollars, but remember, it's a grant-funded program and they have expectations with it. It's not a municipal-run feasibility study. It is through the Mass School Building Authority. So, their expectations are that there is a selection of an onus project manager. The cost of that is built into the feasibility study. There's a selection of a design and selection panel. The cost of that is built into the feasibility study. So, that's an architect, two other consultants. They are the design selection panel. Throughout the entire feasibility process is community input throughout that. It's not done in a bubble. It's not done in the school. The School Building Committee doesn't take total control on it. There are public forums and public meetings on what this looks like and how we can evolve whatever this happens for Shepherd Hill Regional High School. At the same time, they're evaluating Shepherd Hill Regional High School to include existing conditions, what renovation costs would be, what new construction costs would be, and then they get to a point of schematic design. It's a requirement to be in the, in the grant program to look at all options on the table. It doesn't mean that it has to be new construction. It doesn't mean that it has to be renovation. The community will drive that based off of what cost analysis they do throughout the process of the feasibility study. And you have to go through the feasibility study to get to any other step, to get invited. Each one of these steps is an invitation. Just because you did feasibility study doesn't mean you're invited into the next step. Obviously, most cases are because you're doing the work that they're expecting you to do, but you have to get invited. So, the reason why we have to ask for a 30-day extension is because our deadline was May 29th for this project. They have a board meeting in June. We're not prepared for that, so now they're pushed, they pushed us off at best for an August board meeting. So, that's why the 30-day extension had to occur. But this is not an infamy. This does not last forever. So, that was to try to provide a little bit more understanding around the feasibility study. Regarding capital information, as a reminder, the town of Dudley and town of Charlton voters supported a Dudley-Churton Regional School District capital plan valued at $7.5 million. 7566838. That was in September of 2022 that that was voted on. The mechanism on how to pay for that was not voted on, which was part of all this perfect storm trying to bring everything together. We continue to work with both towns to prepare for DCRSD capital assessments coming forward, because they are assessments to the towns. Charlton has already indicated that they will pay 1.5 million voluntarily towards their bill of capital. Keep in mind, capital by agreement is separated for community schools with a shared cost for Shepherd Hill Regional High School. So, Charlton, the roof for Charlton Middle School, the town has already indicated that they will put forward 1.5 million to stock for payment towards the, their portion of the $7.5 million capital project.
Do you know what the percentage is that, out of that $7.5 million is for Charlton and Dudley? People have our soul, I would...
Yeah, I mean, the model that we've been using, which is just like feasibility, if you look at feasibility, the percentage there, it gives you, that gives you the framework for it. But until we know exactly what the end cost is for the roof, because the roof is a couple of million dollars, until we know the end cost, we won't know the exact to-the-penny assessment is for each community, because those projects are slated for the summer. So, there could be change orders. There could be things that were, you know, discovered in there. Everything's within budget. Everything's within the 7.5 million. Actually, we think it's coming in lower than that. So, the assessment, we're not going to assess the community 7.5 if we don't expend 7.5, but it's not to exceed 7.5.
So, is it a 40/60 split? What is the split? Do you know the percentage?
Yep.
If I may, the original split, based on the original projections, was 37% for Dudley and 63% for Charlton.
Thank you.
Because part of that is also built into the size of the roofs, the size of the projects as well. Okay? So, those assessments are coming, and so we need to continue to work with the town of Dudley to develop a plan for FY '25 when the assessment for the capital, their portion of 7.5 million will come forward. We hear a lot of talk about debt issuance, exclusions, things of that nature. So, we wanted to add some clarity from our perspective as a regional school district. We are not the town of Dudley. These are not decisions that we make. The town of Dudley makes these decisions, but we thought we'd share a little bit more information on this. The school committee voted to assess each town for the feasibility study, and the voters approved the capital plan. It's a reiteration. Next steps are for us as a district to, to receive a BAN, which is a bond anticipation note, which will, Mr. Matthew will talk about a little bit more, and then bonds for the projects, and then assess the towns for those, those projects. What terms are associated with assessments to the towns? We often hear debt exclusion and capital outlay expenditure exclusion. We'll talk about those as well from our perspective as a regional school district. So, getting to the terms, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matthew to talk about BAN or bands.
Thank you. So, a BAN, a bond anticipation note, is a short-term debt instrument used to generate cash for initial project costs with the expectation the debt will be replaced later by permanent bonding. Typically issued for a term of less than one year, bands may be reissued for up to 10 years, provided principal repayment begins after two years.
Next is a bond.
Bonds, a means to raise money through the issuance of debt. A bond issuer slash borrower promises in writing to repay a specified sum of money, alternately referred to as face value, par value, or bond principal to the buyer of the bond on a specified future date, maturity date, together with periodic interest at a specified rate. The term of a bond is always greater than one year.
Which we'll talk about in a minute.
Before you go on to the next one, so can I just try to make this in terms that I would understand? A BAN is something that before a project begins, you would take on to say, "This is the estimated cost that we anticipate with reasonable certainty that it will not exceed this amount." And this is, basically, you're saying to a financial institution, "Will you support us for this amount?" And then a bond is when you know the actual amount, and now you're going to start paying it back.
Exactly.
Yep.
Thank you.
And just again, for a point of clarification, with the roof projects not begun yet, we have the bids, but the projects have not put shovel into the ground, as an analogy. So, we won't know the final costs there until the project is done, which we expect at the end of the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Term debt exclusion?
So, debt exclusion is an action taken by a community through a referendum vote to raise the funds necessary to pay debt service costs for a particular project from the property tax levy, but outside the limits under Proposition 2 and 1/2. By approving a debt exclusion, a community calculates its annual levy limit under Proposition 2 and 1/2, then adds the excluded debt service cost. The amount is added to the levy limit for the life of the debt only and may increase the levy above the levy ceiling.
And then, finally, capital outlay expenditure exclusion?
A temporary increase to the tax levy to fund a capital project or to make a capital acquisition. Such an exclusion requires a 2/3s vote of the selectmen or city council, sometimes with the mayor's approval, and a majority vote in a community-wide referendum. The exclusion is added to the tax levy only during the year in which the project is being funded and may increase the tax levy above the levy ceiling. All of these definitions are straight from the DOR municipal page.
Can I ask clarity on one thing?
Sure.
Which ones can be voted in a town meeting and which ones can need to have a vote in an election?
So, if it was a town-related project, everything would need to go through both town meeting and the ballot.
Okay.
Since we're talking about regional debt, there's no town meeting action involved. We've had the ballot approved for the regional debt. The next step would be a ballot vote to exclude the debt from Prop 2 and 1/2.
By the town?
By the town.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to follow that up. That would be the case for a debt exclusion or a capital outlay expenditure?
Capital outlay has, isn't... The district really doesn't have a role in that. If they wanted to exclude the feasibility study assessment, we've assessed them, and the town could decide to use that particular mechanism to have a one-time hit, one-year hit on the tax rate.
Okay.
Or like the town of Charlton? Or like the Town of Charlton, they can, they can use available resources under the tax levy to pay for it, if those resources are available. So just to cover what's, I know Mr. Sage has his hand, but just if I could-
Hold on.
Just to cover what's next, the Town of Dudley Board of Selectmen and the FAA Financial Appropriations Advisory Committee and the school committee are meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 PM at Dudley Town Hall. We're looking for a recommendation from the school committee on what we would recommend to the Board of Selectmen, given what occurred on April 25th and moving forward. The Town of Charlton Annual Town Meeting is Monday, May 15th, and the Town of Dudley Annual Town Meeting is Monday, May 22nd, 2023. So again, this evening, we're looking for a recommendation for the town, but I'm, I'm confident, Madam Chair, that you're going to see if there's any questions based off of this presentation.
That's what I would like to do.
Yes.
Does the, does anyone on the committee have any questions at this point? No, not at this point, okay. Do we have anyone in the audience that might have any questions? Okay, why don't we come up one by one and ask your questions, please?
There are more than one?
There are.
Okay.
So again, just state your name and your town.
Stephen Sage, Charlton. Is it true that both Dudley and Charlton have in the past, for building the two middle schools, done it through a debt exclusion?
Yes.
Which means that after X number of years, with additional payments by the town through our real estate taxes and other sources, those, that debt exclusion will be paid off eventually, correct?
My belief is the middle schools have been paid off.
The middle schools have actually been paid off at this point.
It was timing out with the request for the Town of Charlton for a, a municipal first response complex or something.
Public safety.
Public safety building. It was, it was timing with that, when the debt was coming off the books.
Okay, so both towns should realize that over a period of time, debt exclusions are eliminated from their, their levies, which makes the future, being able to improve situations, you go through more debt exclusions to help your communities. Just a statement, I wanted to make sure people understood that we have done this in the past, we've been successful in raising the funds through taxation to pay off the building of our two middle schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to vote next?
Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Pat Fanning French from Dudley. I have a question about the feasibility study and the reimbursement. Is the 50 to 59% reimbursement just on the feasibility study? I thought I heard you refer to the project, so I didn't know if there was also a reimbursement, if they went forward with a renovation or a new school?
Correct, there is. It's throughout the entire project, that's the whole grant program.
Thank you for clarifying.
Because they know a community can't pay 100% of, some communities can, sorry.
Okay.
We won't name them, but, but they know, communities like ours can't pay 100% of whatever it takes. So the reimbursement rate, it's not, it may, it may be adjusted from one phase to the next, say set it for one of their modules, and then they reevaluate it for the next module.
Okay.
But it's, but right now, it's between 50 and 59%.
Great.
Can I just clarify something on your question?
Sure.
I don't want to, I just want to make sure people understand, do you get reimbursed after each part? Like, we're not waiting until the new building's done to get reimbursed for the feasibility.
No, there, there, you, there are submittals along the way that are reviewed and reimbursed. It's a lagging reimbursement though.
Yes.
It's, they don't give it to you upfront.
Right.
You have to actually complete the work and submit.
And it all comes back as a credit to the town?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how we would do the reimbursement.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, while the next person's coming up.
We still have, if we were, I'm going to go big right now, but if we were to build a new Shepherd Hill, we would have to front that money, just like we have to front the feasibility study.
You have to vote to, for the entire cost of the project?
Correct. I just want to make sure people are aware of that. So we're not going to only have to raise half the other amount of money, we have to come up with the full amount and then be reimbursed.
Well, through borrowing, we're not going to come up with-
Right. I know, but, but I'm, I'm saying, I don't want people to think we only have to borrow half. We have to borrow the full amount and then be reimbursed.
Yes, go for it.
Respectfully, I, I, as a committee, I, I know you've heard this all year long, a lot, we do get reimbursements as a district, but they're all lagging.
Right.
Which is why we have to, the $3.6 million is hitting us hard, we have to come up with the money upfront.
Right.
We can't wait for a lagging reimbursement.
I just want to make that-
And you can't get a reimbursement unless you spend the money either.
Right, right.
Will we know, you can feel free to sit down. Will we know when, when we go to say we are going to, like, here's the project, it's going to cost this much money, will we know the actual reimbursement rate at that point?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, yes, go for it.
Hi, my name is Kathy Hurst, and I'm from Dudley. I have two questions, well, actually, just a comment first, I believe that at the last joint meeting, that was held last Thursday-
Mm-hmm.
And there was discussion about the debt exclusion on the roof, for instance, and Mr. Carminiani did say that that could be, the debt exclusion could be a loan paid off over, he gave an example of 20 years.
Yes.
So it's something that's broken down, that will be less impactful on people's taxes.
Correct.
And another question, if we vote for a debt exclusion in June, when will the tax impact begin on a tax bill? Is it something, well, you brought up something at the last meeting, that you thought that the, the roof could wait until fiscal year 2025.
Right.
And so I was just wondering, if that's so, why don't we wait on that?
Mm-hmm.
Or if we do it now, will it be confusing to people, or will, how, how can you see you're voting for something but explain to them that, but it's not going to be charged to you until the following year?
Right.
That seems to be confusing.
Yep, and I think that's part of the discussion we're going to have tonight.
Okay.
Definitely, thank you for that.
But, but just to be clear, we don't make that decision. That's a decision that is made by the Dudley Board of Selectmen-
Right.
-as to how it gets presented and with a timeline, we can just make recommendations to the Town of Dudley.
But I remember you saying to them, it wasn't on the assessments of the town this year.
Your question is, when is it going to start? When are you going to see it on your tax bill?
Right.
If we say it was on the ballot this time-
Right.
-when would you see it on the-
That, that is not a question this Carminiani knows.
All right.
I do not know that answer. Mr. Matthew does, though.
So by issuing bans in July of 2024, that would make the repayment due in July of 2020, I'm sorry, in July of 2023, when bans are issued, that would mean repayment of the bans are due in July of 2024, fiscal '25. Okay? That's why we've structured it this way. So there's no impact on the Town of Dudley, nor on the Town of Charlton, from an assessment perspective on the roofs, because again, the projects haven't, you know, the main majority of the expenses have not been incurred yet, they'll be incurred over the summer.
So it really hasn't been decided whether it's going to be on the June ballot or the following?
Correct, that's tomorrow night's meeting.
I think that's tomorrow night's meeting.
But I guess, I, I have the same question that you do, Kathy, like, if, if they vote to incur the debt service, are they voting to incur that debt right away, or are they voting to-
There's no assessment coming from the region-
Okay.
-to the, to either town for fiscal '24, other than the voluntary pre-payment from the Town of Charlton.
Okay, so they can write a question in a manner that when the debt is finally decided, they can go out for debt service?
The question, sorry, the question is authorization.
Right.
It's not a timing, it's not-
Okay.
That's why, that's why the, the 25th ballot was structured the way it was, it's authorization.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't mean that the bill's paid on August 20, April 26th, if there was, you know, there's still, there's steps in there and stuff, it's authorization, is what you have to, how you have to look at it.
So in other words, it won't be until fiscal '25?
The assessments won't be there.
Right, right.
When the town decides to figure out how to fund it, that's up to them.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then they're looking for authorization from the town voters.
Okay. Just trying to make it as simplified as possible on the ballot, because it could be confusing.
Exactly.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have someone over there, who wanted to speak?
I organize my questions, I'm instead of doing 10 different pages. So on a few of these pages, you talk about-
Could you just state your name and the town?
Robin Watson, Dudley. On a few pages, you talk about a level-funded budget or a level-funded services. When you're referring to level-funded, are you including the roof? Are you including your feasibility study? And are you including that stabilization fund you were trying to establish?
No, stabilization account is gone.
Okay, so it's just the cost of paying-
It's not even in our vernacular, it's not, we're not even talking about it.
Just the cost of doing business.
Okay.
The level, level-
I'm fine with that.
-level services budget is, is operational, it's just running the school district.
And then on the feasibility study, on page nine, let's say it's approved as a debt exclusion, right, not a Prop 2 and 1/2. Let's say it's approved, we go through this study, the result is a report that makes a recommendation, right? Either renovate the library, the auditorium, whatever, or build a new high school.
Because we're in a grant program that's directed by Mass School Building Authority, you have to look at anything from a renovation to new construction.
Right, so they're going to make a recommendation, or give you prices for either or?
Yes, and then they, then the community, through, through community forums and stuff, will provide the direction where to go.
Yeah.
And then ultimately, the school building committee will take a final vote on that.
Okay, so on the bottom of page nine, let's say the feasibility study is done, then you're invited to the next grant phase, what is that phase?
That would be design, designer's phase.
Okay.
Maybe that's not the exact word, but that's what it is to me.
Okay, design, build.
Taking the schematic design and actually doing architectural drawings on the project. Keep in mind, and as I've said before, the feasibility study can take up to two years to complete.
Oh, I've heard that. Okay.
Not to fund, for clarity, to complete.
Okay, I don't know if I had any other questions, then I think you probably covered everything, just a second. Okay, so your intent is to make a recommendation to Dudley Selectmen to do your operational budget as Prop 2 and 1/2 override, and then separately, debt exclusion for the roof at Dudley Middle School and a debt exclusion for feasibility.
We have not decided on that.
They haven't deliberated on that yet.
That's what we're talking about. I know, but that's tomorrow night.
No, we're talking tonight on just finalizing what we have for our official, like, the school committee would recommend this to you.
Mm-hmm.
We can't force them to do anything, but we, that's what we-
But you can recommend it to them.
And are you thinking, or maybe by the end of your meeting, are you thinking of two
debt exclusion votes or one?
I think that's what we need to talk about.
Okay.
That's why, that's why this-
That's all my questions.
That's why the school committee called the special meeting to deliberate.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that had questions before we start talking about some things? Okay, so why don't we-
Do you want to end with-
Yes.
Mr. Matthews' memo, or do you want to deliberate now about?
Why don't we have all the information in front of us? So why don't we have Mr. Matthews' memo?
On September 6, 2022, the district tells a special, special election in the towns of Dudley and Charlton for the authority to defer debt to address the two middle school roofs and other school safety projects. That vote was positive, allowing the district to proceed with the projects. The total authorization was for $7.5 million. As a reminder, the regional agreement calls for each town to be responsible for its schools' capital amounts, with Shepherd Hill Regional High School split based on the population. As we approach the summer of 2023, the roof construction will begin with the goal of full completion prior to the start of the new school year. The other associated school safety projects have been proceeding in parallel with the roof project bidding. Once the roof projects are complete, the final overall amount of the borrowing will be known. The district plan is to issue bans, bond anticipation notes in July of 2023, to ensure adequate cash flow for the projects. As a result of this timing, there is no assessment to the Town of Dudley in fiscal 2024. The Town of Charlton has voluntarily approved a payment of $1.5 million towards the projects, utilizing their available revenues. The district is working, has worked with our fiscal advisor, and continues to work with bond counsel in the Town of Charlton to determine the appropriate course of action, given the unique circumstance. But it appears that this payment will coincide with the issuance of bans, resulting in a lower total borrowing and lower interest cost for the Town of Charlton. The bans will be required to be repaid in July of 2024. The assessment to both towns in fiscal 2025 will be for the interest costs of those bans. The current market interest rates for this type of borrowing are 3% to 4%, which will result in a total repayment of $210,000 to $280,000, split between Dudley and Charlton. This is based on a borrowing of $7 million. The approximation of interest payment is Dudley at slightly less than 40%, and Charlton at slightly more than 60%. Of the main driver of these costs is the roof replacement, which vary, and the size of the roofs vary between Dudley Middle and Charlton Middle. The cost and split of the interest charges will change if the district is able to receive the full $1.5 million from the Town of Charlton prior to issuing the bans. Based on that scenario, the district would borrow $5.5 million, $7 million minus the $1.5, with an interest cost of approximately $165,000 to $220,000, with the percentage split changing to approximately 51% for Charlton and 49% for Dudley. So again, if we get the $1.5 million prior to issuing the bans, and I think the timing, you know, everything that I see would mean, would say that it would line up, we don't have to borrow the $7 million. Again, the $7 million is the upside of what we expect to spend, and we were authorized for $7.5 million. So, you know, right there, we're coming in half a million dollars less than the original projection. So, but again, you know, if, if we get it in time, the amount we borrow and the interests, interest costs change. Permanent financing through the issuance of municipal bonds will be discussed and decided in the spring of 2024. If permanent bonds are issued during fiscal 2025, repayment will be scheduled to begin in fiscal 2026, with a short-term five-year note for smaller items, and a 20-year note for the roofs themselves. The district will work with both communities to ensure that the timing of these debt payments meets the town's needs and cash flows.
Does anyone have any questions on Mr. Matthews' memo?
I just have one.
Yes, go ahead.
So if I heard you correctly, and I read this correctly, and this is not my understand, this is not my expertise, if the Town of Charlton can come through with the $1.5 million and the appropriate timeline before the issuance of the bans, it will actually save both the Town of Charlton and the Town of Dudley money in the interest that is accrued, because of the lower amount that we're asking for?
No, that's why the percentages, the split percentages change from slightly less than 40 and slightly more than 60-
Okay.
-to almost 50/50.
Okay.
So Charlton would benefit from their investment by not paying interest costs on money that they don't-
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other people that have any, any other members that have any questions? Okay, so why don't we go back? So I, based on the meeting of last week, and Kelly Zella and I attended that with Mr.[1674.71] So I, based on the meeting of last week, and Kelly Zella and I attended that with Mr. Matthew, they were asking us for our advice on some matters, and I want to just make sure we brought it back to the committee so that we were all under, you know, that we didn't just have a feeling of what the committee wanted. We wanted to make sure we, if we're going to speak for the whole committee, we want you to have a voice in that. Yes, okay, I thought you said. So we want to, I, I think the first thing that we just want to clarify is that the committee feels separate the operational costs from any, from any capital costs.
Are you asking us?
I'm asking for you, in general, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess I would like the committee's recommendation on, do you, do you feel that to separate the two capital costs?
Yes.
Yes.
You feel no?
I honestly wonder if we should wait to even ask for the money for the roof until a later date.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we have a motion? I'd entertain a motion to recommend to the town of, to the town of Dudley that they.
The feasibility study be paid for on a debt exclusion.
I don't believe we should recommend that, because they may choose a different.
Right.
Funding structure, they may choose a different type.
You may want to have a motion for operational, for just that alone, because you did, straw with your committee said yes. To separate that out, so the first motion should be.
Perfect.
To recommend to the town of Dudley an operational override amount, amount of nine hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. I think I made a mistake by one dollar there?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Do I have anyone that would move that motion?
So moved.
So moved, okay, and second?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we open up discussion, and you moved it, so you can discuss if you'd like first?
I don't have anything to say on it, it's what needs to happen.
Okay.
Kelly?
I guess I just have a question whether we're looking to recommend they do the, are the school side and the municipal side of the operational separate, or is that to be recommended that they do?
That's a different conversation, if you want to have it. Right now, we're just asking, is this the override request that you would recommend?
Then I don't have a comment, because I was going to talk about what Kelly's talking about.
Right, Madam Chair, I think the, the question is, what, what value are we asking for the override? That's what the motion is, is about.
Okay, well, I thought we asking, I want to get the number again. Nine hundred sixty thousand?
Nine hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars.
And that's because we're asking for the nine hundred and sixty, but we have to add back the thirty-four thousand from last year.
That was, that was paid for by ARPA under the town of Dudley.
Right. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes, go ahead.
In the town of Dudley's budget that they had passed out at the meeting last Thursday, they do have that exact level service budget amount for us represented in the override column.
Okay.
So they appear in sync with the school committee in terms of our request.
Okay. So do we have any further discussion on that matter? Okay, I take, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Now what, what do you suggest we do for the next one?
I, I think it's, it's, it's both the capital and not capital, I mean, it's both capitals.
Okay.
Well, I think it's the, working with the town of Dudley, again, school committee's not in a position to, I mean, you can tell the town of Dudley what to do, right, wrong, or indifferent, but you're really, they're going to make the decision at the end of the day. So I think your first move was to ask for the operational override. The second recommendation would be, I, I think you should maybe have a motion to say, separate out any capital requests.
Okay. So I entertain a motion. Okay.
Right.
I'd entertain a motion to separate, to make sure we recommend to the town of Dudley to separate out any operational.
Any capital.
Operational capital.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to separate the capital expenses to the town of Dudley.
Second?
Second, okay. Do you want to start that discussion?
So, like I said before, I think that we need to separate the roof and the feasibility study because we're not going to assess the taxpayers of Dudley for at least another year.
So right now, we're separating out the operation from the cap, the capital as two separate entities, right?
The first motion was for the value for the operational. Now, this motion is to make sure that, that they know that the school committee recommends separating out any capital assessments coming forward from an operational request.
That's what we're voting on right now.
Yeah, we're trying to keep it as simple and clear as possible.
But how about excluded from the two and a half override? We're going to separate it, but we recommend that we're not going to put it into a two and a half override.
That's, that's what we mean.
That's another question.
Okay, that's another question, because we're separating it right now, is that.
You're not going to put it in the, in the one question for operational override, you're separating the two.
Right.
Okay.
That's, that's the motion right now, is you're separating, you're not combining operational and capital together.
But it's still, we're still not saying how that's going to be funded.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Well, this is the motion to separate it, all right.
This is a motion to separate, is everybody okay on that? Okay, today, is there more discussion on that? No, okay, all those in favor? And that is unanimous? Okay, and I think, Caitlin, did you want to make the next motion? You talked about the roofs.
So, you should make the motion regarding the feasibility study then.
Right. Okay. So I'll make a motion to assess for the feasibility study or recommend to the board of, or the town of Dudley for the four hundred and sixty-three thousand for the feasibility study? Is that how you want? What do you want, how do you want it?
My best interpretation, Mr., my best interpretation is Mr. Matthews going to say it.
Okay, that's a good one, go ahead.
I think the cleanest thing to make it absolutely black and white would be to vote to have the feasibility study as a separate question.
Okay.
That, that way, you're giving the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, please separate this out from anything else that you're going to do. You've already done that in vote two of operating in capital, but now we're subdividing capital.
Okay.
So I think it makes sense to say, please make the feasibility study its own unique thing.
Yes.
And continue to work with the town to perhaps identify other funding sources that they might be able to pay for this.
Right.
Can I say so moved?
You may.
Second.
You may.
Yeah, I'll try to capture it. Don't ask me. It's, it's own unique, the assessment's coming, so it's not assessment.
Right.
It's own unique funding, required funding.
Right, not part of the operational override.
Not part of operational, not part of any other capital.
Okay.
I second that.
You second that. Do we have discussion on that matter? No, all those in favor of that? Okay, that's unanimous.
Okay. Can I ask a question at this point? Is it appropriate for us to make a recommendation to the town of Dudley to wait on a question, wait on how they're going to figure out, wait on asking the citizens how they're going to fund the roofs until after we go through the process of installation, so we know an exact number? Or is that not appropriate for us to say that?
I think that's kind of why we're meeting tonight.
Okay.
Like, I feel like our citizens have asked us to make it easier and only ask for what we need, and we don't, we're not coming to them in next fiscal year for those roofs.
Okay, so you think it's appropriate for us to tell the town, the Board of Selectmen that that's our recommendation for how they fund it? How they talk about.
How they fund it is their responsibility.
Like, how about, I, you know, I would entertain a motion to recommend to the town of, to the town of Dudley that we put off any votes for the roofs until the next fiscal year. Second?
I would have used the word delay, but put off is okay.
Okay, delay. I'll have a friendly.
No, it's a good one.
Delay.
You can amend it.
Yeah, I'll amend my own.
Okay, who's, is that Jamie Terry?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to discuss that?
So I, I just think that we have a lot of priorities for our budget. I would like to see our override pass. We're not going to need the money until a later date, so we should ask at a later date for the roof.
And my only add-on to that is, I think if I was a voter in the town of Dudley, I would appreciate having the actual cost known to me of how much it actually costs to do the work, and so I would feel more comfortable with the vote that I was putting forth once we know the cost.
Mm-hmm, agree. Does anyone else have any comments? And I think we've also heard, I mean, I've heard loud and clear from people that ask for exactly what you need. We don't need it right now. Don't ask for it. So, okay. I would te, are we all set? No, yes, okay, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Okay.
I have another one.
Okay.
This might generate more conversation for us, but it's my, it's my opinion that, I'm not making it a motion, I want to have it as a conversation.
You have to have a motion, have a conversation, I think, at this point.
I don't think we do, but if you want me to do it as a motion, then I will.
Tiffany, Robert's rules is, is motion for discussion.
Okay, fine. Um, then, then I make a motion that we request that the school override request for operational budget be separated from the town override request if one is being put forth as a override request.
You know, so sorry for clarification.
Please ask.
You're saying that you don't want the two overrides combined? Is that your motion, the operational?
Correct, the municipal and the school operational override, I would like them to be separated.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, let's discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, so I made the motion, so I, my reason for that is I, I believe, and I wrote down my notes from the la, the, the second question and answer session we had, and there may be people from Dudley that didn't hear it the same way, but I, I wrote down that, that it was clear that there was a request for a separation between what the municipal requests were and what the school requests were for operational. And maybe that's not true of every single voter in the town, but that's how I heard it.
Yes, go ahead, Caitlin.
So in a previous meeting, I've mentioned that the citizens of the town of Dudley need to understand that if they want to fund us, they need to fund the town. And when the town of Dudley goes for their operational override, they're not separating out, I need this much money for the police, I need this much money for the fire. They need a certain amount of money in their budget to fund all departments, and we're one of those departments. So I believe that, I understand why you want it separated, but to me, as a citizen, I can understand why they want it as one question.
Just a follow-up to that, we're the school committee, and so our responsibility is to first put, I work for municipality, so let's be clear and put that on the table. I understand the needs for the town of Dudley, absolutely, but our role as the seven of us is here to support and fight for the school and the needs of the school as our number one top priority. And so I'm here saying, I feel that that's where we need to make sure we are funding so that we do not continue to short our students.
Now, my opinion is that we have a working relationship with the town. And I think by putting it separate, then we're pitting the school against the town. And I agree with Caitlin, I think, I would hope they come up with a good figure two for the override, that's not going to be overwhelming like the last one. But I just feel that we should have it together, because bottom line is, they have to come up with the money to fund the school, to fund all the departments.
I, I would concur with my Dudley folks. I, I just, I feel like, yes, we're here for our students, the town members elected me to serve on this board, and so I have to have both the, like, the thoughts of the town's needs as well as the school needs. And I just, I feel like we have a very strong working relationship with our government, and I don't want, you know, I, I wouldn't want to jeopardize that, and I don't want to jeopardize the, our public safety and our police, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to pit our town against each other either. Right, like, I don't want it to be the schools versus the town, like, I just wouldn't want to see that happen.
And Jamie, I, sorry.
Go ahead.
I completely agree, we are here to advocate for the children and, and the district, and that's why I think waiting on the roof was a way to prioritize the needs for FY twenty-four. So to not recommend separating it doesn't mean I'm not prioritizing the district, I just, moving forward, we have to have a good working relationship with our towns, so.
Yep, go ahead. I, I don't think that this would create a divide, but I can appreciate that you all feel that way, and you live in this community, so you absolutely have a right to feel that way. I would also like to put out there that as the schools, given the numbers that have come down through the, the state funding so far, we, we are reducing the original request to the town of Dudley for the increased assessments for the year, I guess I'll call it this FY two thousand twenty-four assessment, but we are reducing it by two hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars from what it originally came in at that number. And so I want the, the citizens of the town of Dudley to understand that that is a, we, we, the number that comes to the table from the school is already less that much money than where we were at, at the first two and a half override request, so. I guess I, I hear what Mrs. O'Coin stated and said, she hopes that the municipality comes back with similar ability to reduce so that the citizens can understand that they were heard and that their needs were tried to be met as well as what the town needs to serve the students.
Do we have any other thoughts?
Sorry. Thinking if it were per the Charlton side, I feel like we would be having the same kind of conversation of making sure we aren't pitting one against the other, because at those town meetings, everybody, you know, one side against the other, and, you know, obviously, I get the school and the municipality side, but I feel like we really, as a, as a town and a school, need to work together and be on the same page. So I guess I would agree that it's probably best to combine them, even though I completely understand and agree with putting the question out there, if you hadn't, I would have, but, and we're thinking about it, it certainly seems like the right thing to do would be to put them, put them together and have the towns work together with us, and keep that relationship more cohesive rather than kind of tearing it apart and bringing it separate.
Jamie, did you have any thoughts or anything?
No, I just kind of piggyback on the same thing, I, I agree, I don't, we shouldn't pit, you know, the police and the fire, and we, we're a municipality just then the same. And yes, we're one of the biggest ones, and we require more of the budget from each town, but again, it's not saying that we're more important, we do deserve more money and that we should take from anywhere else, we shouldn't. And it's just trying to come up with a way that isn't, that's going to be palatable for the people of the town. I agree, and separating everything, or, you know, what we've already discussed here, I don't know, it's just, we, we do need to keep our students and our teachers, you know, we employ a lot of people in the community. We just need to make sure that, you know, we're, we put forth a vote, a recommendation to Dudley that the Dudley town voters will agree upon, so that we don't lose funding.
Okay.
One last comment to make. We're also, we're also slated to be.
No, I was just going to say, I, I didn't let Jean have any courtesy. You, you don't mind waiting, okay.
Sorry, I, I didn't know you had your hand up, I apologize.
She didn't, I was just trying to make sure everybody got a chance to speak once, so. That's okay, go ahead.
We're also the department, if you guys want to look at it that way, that will take the extremely largest hit if this doesn't pass. And so we are the ones that are most in jeopardy of losing our staff and therefore weakening our education system for our students. So I appreciate, especially working for municipality, where everybody at this table has spoken to, but I'm telling you, I feel like we need to put our efforts into making sure that we are protecting our school.
Jean, did you have any comments?
Well, now that I'm on the spot, no. I actually agree with Jamie, I, I, I'm sorry, Mrs. Terry.
It's fine.
You know, because when I do look at it, you know, it is, we are thinking, you know, two million dollars of cuts if the override doesn't pass. You know, I mean, what, like about thirty teachers, a whole bunch of other things that we still need to discuss next week? But I also understand the, you know, working with the, with the town, and I think if the town actually does reduce their override, so it's just FY twenty-four where it's a more palatable number and a smaller increment of taxes, I'm okay with the two of them being together. So I think, I think the townspeople would be able to get behind that one.
Okay.
I guess, go ahead, just kind of go off that. Is there a certain percentage that we have cut to make it fair on both sides where we've dropped, you know, our, what we're asking, our ask is lowered to ask if they are taking another look at the municipality side?
You know, our ask is lowered because we've received more funding from the state. I don't believe the municipality side received similar funding from the state. I don't know that their total is, is going to be reduced by anything, do you?
It doesn't appear so based on the number, the override amount that they appear to be asking for in their initial discussions. It looks like that number is fairly in line with what, with the original request. And just as a reminder, we're projecting the, the revenues based on the House budget, but that is a projection. And just today, there was an email out about the state being, you know, over a billion dollars short in revenue for last month. So we hope that the Senate, you know, continues its process and funds regional transportation at a hundred percent and continues with the additional thirty dollars per pupil that generated these additional revenues for us. But we may, that may not be the case, you know, in a couple of weeks when the final Senate budget is released. But again, we have to act on the information that we have, this makes the appropriate sense, and we'll take it from there, but I just want to be clear, these are not guaranteed revenues as we sit here. revenues as we sit here today. This is the best information that we have.
Okay.
So, in that case, Mr. Matthew, if we move forward with this number, and this was what was voted upon, and the state did not fund us at those, we would have to make reductions, and so we should not be talking about taking additional reductions on top of that risk that we have out there, because then our schools even lose more if that doesn't go our way with the, the way the state funding comes through. I, and I guess I will just add one more thing, that when you talk about the municipality and, and I guess however that question came up about, are they having equal reductions? Remember that we've already had a million dollars' worth of reductions to our schools, and the, that there has not been an equivalent, not that I want there to be, but there has not been an equivalent loss in the municipality side. And so we just continue to take a hit in our school district, and we're talking about taking even more of a hit. So, it's not, it's not apples to apples, or oranges to oranges, it is different to look at a municipality in a school district. And I say that, living this, living on this side for five years after being twenty years into the municipalities, so.
I, I don't know how any of you feel, do any of you feel, do you want to ask any members of our audience if they have any questions or comments about this before we vote?
Yes.
I wouldn't mind hearing. Does anybody?
Stephen Sage Charlton, from what I've listened to so far, it sounds like you can make any recommendation you want to the Dudley Select Board, but they're going to decide.
Correct.
So they can reject any recommendation you want. You're playing on, well, how are they going to feel if we make a recommendation that says separate, separated? Is it going to affect our feelings between how we operate with each other? Are they going to be angry with us? Are they going to be happy with us? They're going to make the decision. I say, just tell them this is what you need, and they're going to make the decision. The other people that need to hear from you is our state legislator and governor, and asking them, why are they so damn late in providing information to the communities that have to make these decisions now? You should have the information from the Senate, and the House, and the Governor, well before you sit down and discuss this. It's just shameful that they put communities into this kind of bind.
Do we have any members from Dudley that would like to speak? Ferris Beeler.
I think that's a fair point that Mr. Sage had, and also, you know, to Jean's thought, if it doesn't pass, we lose it all. If, then I don't think we can really take that risk. I don't, I don't know, I also agree that the town, if the number is lower, maybe more open to a lower amount to pass at this time, but it's still a scary thing to think that if it fails, what kind of losses we're really taking as, as a school for our, for our students. And that is, I guess, why we're here, is for the students. But in the end, the town will make the final recommendation, so.
Reiterate that our assessment hasn't been reduced through any work of ours, it's just because, like you said, we've gotten additional revenue, potentially. So, my thought is, if we want the town to reduce their number, we should reduce our number, but we're not going to, and I don't, I don't want that, but I don't necessarily blame them for not reducing their number, they came up with a number that they feel they need for the future, and that's what we came up with, so I can understand why their number is the same amount, too.
Kathy Hurst, Dudley. I don't know if it's my place to say this, but you're talking about cuts, and the town side has new hires on the horizon on their budget. So I don't feel that's fair. You know, when they're putting their budget together, they've got some lines on their budget where they're adding additional, not that I'm against firemen or anything, but like three, I think, and a couple other positions that they're adding into, that it's not cutting back, but they're, they're adding, and you're in fear of subtracting. And that's why I think some people feel that, I mean, I understand about, you have to have a working relationship with the school side and the town side, but I think some people look at what's, what's going on in each two separate situations are very different, so some people might support one more than the other because they see how they're budgeting their money. I just want to say that.
Thank you.
And I have a question. Is the town level servicing their budget?
Like she said, they are putting addition, there are some areas where they.
No, I know, she said that, but I haven't seen the budget, so evidently, they're not level servicing their budget like we are.
I would say that's accurate.
That, that's my impression, certainly, of the conversations that we've had.
That they're not.
I believe, if, and correct me, anyone, if I say something wrong, I believe that the positions that were added were positions that were mandated by the state. That is what we have been told, correct?
I think the best place to get the answer to that question tomorrow night.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's really tough. I have a hard enough time speaking for the stuff I'm responsible for. Being, being asked to speak on something that I have, that I'm not responsible for is really challenging.
What I've seen, it's very vague, so I couldn't come up with the answer, because what I have seen is vague to me. So, we need more of a definite answer about their budget.
Yes, go ahead. That's an important piece, if people that have questions about their budget, there is a meeting tomorrow, and there is one on May eighth, where the Board of Selectmen are meeting, we will be there tomorrow, too. So if these questions are being answered by us, which obviously we can't, then I would ask you to ask them as well.
Can I, can I make a suggestion before we go to vote? I mean, I wonder if we, instead of voting, and it seems like it may be pretty split, I wonder if we bring to their attention that a lot of conversation was had about what the residents may want, and that it seems as if the residents may want to be able to split that vote.
I appreciate why you're asking that, I don't want to remove my motion.
Okay, that's fine, yes. Can we move the question? Okay. Okay.
The question was to separate operating.
To recommend.
To recommend to the Board of Selectmen to separate out the operating, operation, operational budget requests for a prop-to-an-f override.
For municipality and schools.
Yes. And it's recommendation only.
Right. Okay, all those in favor? I don't know what I vote, okay. So it's three, three yes, all those against? Three? And you abstained, so that, so the motion fails, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I can, what I.
When you recommend, make the recommendations, you can say them.
I can just say that there was a conversation had, you know, we were pretty split, but it's, it is important to let them know that there was a conversation, and it, there were some questions on it, and rightfully so, on either side. Okay, I'll bring that forward. Okay, is there anything else that the committee needs to discuss about this? Okay. We had said that we would move public comment to the end as well, is there any further public comment? No? Okay. Seeing none, I make, I move to adjourn. So moved.
Caitlin Panzik moves. Second, Kelly Bell.
Okay, all those in favor? Great.